Okay, great. Thank you. We don't have any special recognitions this evening, so we can move on to approval of minutes. If anybody would like to approve the minutes, the opportunity is yours.
Chad?
I'd like to make a motion and approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Thank you, Ryland.
I will second Chad's motion.
Thank you. A motion made and seconded. All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. No public hearings this evening. Under Public Comments, Public Comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. We would welcome you to come up to the podium. Please give us your name and address. Sign in and do push the mic button on. At this time, we will open up Public Comments.
My name is Sylvie Gangback. I am here tonight to talk about item six H. Let's Paint the Town. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Sylvia.
Good evening. Paul Schultz and Russ Kenny were with TDS Telecom. We're doing the fiber overbuild of your city and we'll be speaking on six C.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Scott Rogers. I'm representing the Chippewa St. Croix Rail Commission tonight and I'll be speaking on.
Thank you. Okay, Public Comments is still open if anybody would like to speak. Last call for Public Comment. Okay, we'll close Public Comment and move on with the rest of our meeting. No unfinished business tonight. Under New Business, six A is the presentation from Jolene Stark regarding Menominee Public Library Vibrant Spaces Grant. So, good evening, Jolene. If you'd push the mic on.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. I am the Library Director, Jolene Stark, and I just wanted to give you an update on our Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation's Vibrant Spaces Grant. You might remember there was a resolution passed by council to apply for this grant back in December of 2022, and the application had letters of support from thirteen community leaders. Your support has resulted in forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in matching funds coming to our municipal library to help develop and enhance public spaces right here in Menominee. And from the W E D C, they say creating vibrant and engaging communities helps communities recruit and retain residents, sustaining a robust labor force and enhancing the quality of life. Creating public gathering places in the heart of our communities fosters community connections and creates accessible locations for programming and amenities desired by local residents with the additional benefit of boosting foot traffic for nearby businesses. So these Vibrant Spaces funds will be matched by a private donation from the Joan Pulaski Estate, which was in accordance with her wishes for her gift. Deliverables will include an outdoor lounge on the north or northeast side of the building with shade trees, tables and chairs, Adirondack lounge chairs, a shade pergola, an outdoor fire feature, a native plants planting bed and a hammock lounge. And this project is to be completed by December thirty first of 2024. So this Vibrant Spaces plan is phase one of a multi-year outdoor plan that was in your packets. That is the overall site plan for this plan. It was developed with gift funds, not at taxpayer expense, total gift funds and adopted by our library board. So the Board of Trustees sensed that, and John Grape can attest to this, that by capitalizing on the multiplying opportunity and building community interest, other lead gifts are likely to follow. So further development of the plan, including a better public performance space for outdoor programming, a variety of seating options, interpretive signage and ADA accessible paths would enhance the site and create even more of a draw for visitors. Two things I know for sure are that people want to live in interesting places and that twenty-first century libraries are about more than just being a repository for books. This plan would require a transfer of property or an easement from Excel Energy for the land to the east and north of the library, which would potentially allow the city to capitalize on grant funds that are available through the Wisconsin D N R and maybe someday build trail connectivity between the library and Lakeside Park. But the reason that we looked at this grant is because government funding no longer allows us to do the work that a twenty-first century library or our community requires. And I know, put this around the room this evening and you can see that historically the city has funded M P L in a stable fashion when you look at a twenty-year average. But when you flip it over and adjust that chart for inflation, it looks like a decrease in investment. In other words, four hundred thousand dollars doesn't go as far as it used to. And this is impacting our community with a decrease of nineteen open hours of service every week. We used to be at a high of sixty-eight hours of service. We're down to forty-nine with no nights and only four weekend hours. This does not serve the working public or students, and we've learned this from survey feedback. Our performance indicators that we report on to you all for their end of the year report remain high because we're investing the staff time that we do have into programming and services for young families and retirees, especially in the summer. For our first mom concert, our Music Over Menomen Concert Series, we had four hundred and fifty people on the library lawn. In 2022, we had nearly sixty thousand library visitors and my projections for this year are seventy thousand, which is closer to pre-pandemic numbers. Seventy thousand people coming through our doors. These visitors have easy access to area shops, restaurants, retailers and activities that Menominee has to offer. And the library is here to partner with you all in promoting area tourism, economic development and quality of life in our community. Community investment takes investment from all of us. We want to make Menominee a more attractive place to work, raise families and stay a while. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the Vibrant Spaces project?
Well, Jolene, I think it's incredible, number one, to get the grant matching funds and to have a long-range plan on what those spaces could be in the future. I appreciate your work on this and I would open it to any questions from council if anybody had a question. But I think you summed it up pretty well and I appreciate your extra efforts. Thank you. Okay, and then that takes us down to six B, the presentation from Scott Rogers regarding West Central Wisconsin Rail Coalition. Hi, Scott. Oh, no, he's.
You gotta suspend the rules.
Okay, I'm sorry, he's not staffed. Yeah, okay. We need a motion to waive the rules. Ryland?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to waive the rules so that Scott may speak with us.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Second Ryland's motion?
Okay, second by Chad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Scott. You're up.
I appreciate it. I have quite a few slides. I moved through them quickly, so I'm gonna, your finger will be busy. Might get tired, but I'm here to talk about the potential for passenger trains to Menominee. So the upper-left corner picture you see there, I understand is students getting on the train in the nineteen forties and there are lots of places with college towns now, like the lower-right Champagne, Illinois, where students get on the trains today, and we hope that'll be happening for Menominee. So you can go to the next one. I'm the Vice President of Governmental Affairs at the Eau Claire Area Chamber of Commerce and through that role, I've been involved in Passenger Rail. We also ally with the Chippewa Falls and Menominee Chambers of Commerce. Tammy is here from the chamber and Ashley is out of town, but she would, said she would have been here if she could. And we have worked together on things like this and they've been supporting this project as well. I'm also a member of the Midwest Interstate Passenger Rail Commission, which I'm a Wisconsin representative, which covers the eight upper Midwest states. And then I'm here mainly to talk about the Chippewa St. Croix Rail Commission and Councilmember Yonko is a member of that commission representing Menominee. We'll talk about that in just a moment. Next. So Menominee has been on a lot of maps for potential passenger services. This is one from two thousand and four. Wisconsin D O T said Passenger Rail Service was feasible through Menominee. Next. The Minnesota Rail Plan, which it's required to do for the Federal Railroad Administration, there to Twin Cities line. And if you go to the next one, the current Wisconsin Rail Plan also includes, in their long-term map, serves through Eau Claire and Menominee. But getting a line on a map doesn't get you a passenger train or a multiple passenger train. So funding is really what matters and that would be the next two slides. If you've heard of the bipartisan infrastructure law, you've seen a lot of provisions across all kinds of modes there. Sixty-six billion over five years is part of that law. And if you go to the next slide, it gives you a perspective. The red outlined one is the current fiscal year and each year for five years, the U.S. government is putting as much into Passenger Rail Development as has for the last ten. So that opens a lot up. Next slide. You won't be able to read this, but this is the Corridor Identification Program, the F R A put together, where you start out getting a corridor identified and then you move into the implementation phases. And we're in the identification phase right now. And if you get a corridor identified and accepted by the F R I, you start out with a half-million-dollar planning grant. So we can go to the next slide. The Federal Register Notice for that came out in December and in March then entities who were qualified had to get their applications in. You can go to the next one. So that brings us to the Chippewa St. Croix Rail Commission. You and five other municipalities and three counties passed resolutions in 2021 to form the commission. And the commission's purposes are to develop Passenger Rail Service on the corridor between Eau Claire and the Twin Cities through Wisconsin communities. You can go to the next slide. The commission's been meeting. It's also brought in the Union Pacific Railroad. It has the D O Ts from both states as well as our institutions of higher learning and our Regional Planning Commission involved in planning. You can go to the next slide. So this goes back to a current map that Wisconsin D O T has of where our Passenger Rail routes potential in Wisconsin. The brown ones are bus connections, but the other colored ones are potential or current rail services. And Wisconsin D O T has been working with our commission and other communities and they've put in four applications for those planning, planning grants. And so we can go to the next four of those. They put in one for Chicago to Milwaukee, which they already have and would develop further. They put one in for service up to Green Bay through the Fox Cities. They put one in for continued development of the current trains that run through La Crosse. And this is where it really gets meaningful to us. The next one. They have put in a grant to study a through Chicago to Twin Cities route through Eau Claire and Menominee. And you can go to the next slide. Amtrak has also identified service through here as potential as part of its national map of rail expansions. You can go to the next slide. And then this is where it's relevant to the Chippewa St. Croix Rail Commission. The commission is an eligible entity because it's a multi-jurisdiction transportation commission. And the commission also put in an application at the end of March. I do have a link available if anybody would like to see the full application. They did limit it to fifteen pages, so it's not too onerous. But if you go to the next slide, we can talk a little bit about why we think we have a strong application. First of all, it meets transportation needs for our region and any application's gonna have to do that, but we have some other unusual pieces about it. You can go to the next slide. And you can go to the next one. This is developed where I have a clicker. So we're doing something unique here. You've heard of Amtrak operating. You go to the next slide, you're gonna see a list of four companies who do contract operations of Passenger Rail Services. You don't see their names on anything, but they each carry more passengers and run more trains than Amtrak, some of them internationally. If you go to the next slide, you're not gonna be able to read this, but this shows internationally and locally where all these companies in the U.S. where all these companies have services that they operate. And you can go to the next slide. And in fact, in Connecticut, the state of Connecticut hired one of these companies to run C T Rail on the same tracks that Amtrak uses for other trains. So there's a precedent for both locally operated and Amtrak trains on the same route. You can go to the next one. Another thing is the Host Railroad Direct Access Model. Union Pacific, the railroad that owns the tracks, has been very involved in the negotiations. They propose a different arrangement where there would be less upfront capital required to get the train started, but that they would get a competitive market rate for using their tracks. You can go to the next one. And that's actually, it shows the map of the current route and Union Pacific has actually put a lot of investment. Passenger Rail Service. Next one is considering zero emission equipment. You go to the next slide. A company called Stadler, which is a Swiss company, but building equipment in the U.S. has developed what they say is a successful hydrogen propulsion. And they've actually told us that this short route between Twin Cities and Eau Claire with several trains a day might be an ideal test pilot. That may or may not be the direction we take, but it's another thing to consider. And then finally, transportation-oriented development. And you can go to the next slide. One of the things we've seen is where transit is developed, you get great economic development around the stations. Pictures here are Denver and Miami. Certainly, we aren't Denver or Miami, but if you look at the lower left, Normal, Illinois is a mid-sized city with a college and they've had two hundred million dollars in investment around their train station. You can go to the next one. And then transportation-oriented development can also help with things like older citizens who don't want to drive everywhere to have housing nearby and also meeting the needs of the younger generation. You can go to the next slide. We also think it's very strong because this is a list of all the supporting letters we got, including the Wisconsin and Minnesota Departments of Transportation and other entities that have supported our application. You can go to the next slide. So really, there are three ways that we could be getting Passenger Train Service to Menominee. The frequent regional service from Eau Claire to the Twin Cities, the application the commission put in through service, that would be an Amtrak train that the Wisconsin and Minnesota would help make happen. And then there's an active proposal to create, in the interim, shuttle connections, you can go ahead of the next one, between Eau Claire and Menominee and Toma as they add that second train through La Crosse, where you'd be able to buy a ticket from Menominee or Eau Claire. It would include a shuttle to Toma and you'd be able to get on a train then for Milwaukee or Chicago. You can go to the next slide. There's a precedent all that for already. The state of Wisconsin is running a shuttle from Milwaukee up through the Fox Cities to Green Bay. And you can go to the next one. WISDOT actually gave us this slide about a year or so ago showing a potential schedule where if both the current train and the new train had shuttle connections from Menominee and Eau Claire, the kind of schedule you might be able to see. Okay, one more section here. What about public investments in Passenger Rail? The state of Missouri did a major study where they looked at their services that they fund between St. Louis and Kansas City. And you can go to the next slide. They spent about eight million dollars in public funds to do this and their study found that they get twenty-two million dollars in tax revenue back from that and two hundred and eight million dollars in overall economic activity. So you have to carefully examine if you're gonna put public money into something, whether it's worth it, and they have found that that's the case. All right, next one. So next, we expect the F R A corridor decisions in the October-November timeframe. In the meantime, the commission is putting together a working group of the communities along the line to do station planning and development. Then once the grant decision comes out, there'll be an initial planning period for about eighteen months. Then you move into other areas called a Service Development Plan, Environmental Clearances, Construction and Operation. So we could be seeing service in three to five years if everything goes well. And just one more, I think. Oh, just was gonna mention, if you're planning a trip to Chicago or Milwaukee or Minneapolis in a few years, instead of wondering about the traffic, maybe you'd be able to just sit back and enjoy your time on the train. You can go to the next one. You might be able to take your family on the train. And finally, the next one, we might be able to bring tourists out to enjoy our amenities of our communities. The commission does meet regularly. Right now, we're in that interim period waiting for the F R A decision. So our next meeting, which I think is the next slide, is gonna be on Wednesday, August sixteenth, and Dunn County's been kind enough to, as a central location, to host our meetings. So went as quickly as I could, but that's kind of a cover of the waterfront of what's going on with the Passenger Rail.
Good. Well, I have a couple of questions we can open up for council, too. As far as economic diversity, have you guys done a study as far as how many people will be commuting for jobs versus pleasure? And do you have a, you know, a volume of ridership that you're looking at?
One of the reasons you get the initial planning grant is to get that grant to do things like a contemporary ridership study and to look at the traffic in the region and what you can generate for Passenger Rail Service. There'd be a lot of commonality with the Chicago to Milwaukee corridor, just not as high a population. And they found that they have all kinds of uses. They have some daily commuters, but it's primarily people using it for other kinds of travel. So one of the things we have noticed, you know, through the chamber and others, is we're getting a lot of people in our regions who maybe work for a company in the Twin Cities, but don't go every day. Those kinds of people might be using it or vice versa, coming out to our region. So there's a variety of people that would use it and then, of course, having the universities in our area, those are always a large traffic generator, not just students going to and from home, but just the kind of commerce that the universities generate.
Is there also considered in here park riding chairs and/or bus transportation from parking lots next to the train depots, et cetera?
Yeah, that's one of the important things to consider is how do you get there? How do you? One of the things we want, the Station Planning and Development Group, that is, what are the connections with other modes? River Falls and UW River Falls has been very interested in the project. They don't have public transportation into or out of River Falls. And we've talked about a shuttle, for instance, from Hudson to River Falls. Half of their students come from Minnesota. And so those kinds of connections would be looked at as well, as well as the development around the stations themselves. If you get four-plus trains a day stopping in a station, you get the critical mass to create a lot of economic activity.
I see. Is there questions, Chad? Use your mic.
But I mean, I'm not an expert, but so are these ones that going past Menominee? Those are for freight right now?
Right, the tracks are owned by the Union Pacific Railroad.
So how do you turn the, what do you gotta do to turn the freight into a Passenger Rail?
So if you went back to, say, the nineteen fifties or nineteen thirties, there would have been dozens and dozens of trains through here. So there's capacity to do more. It gets into the signal system, the tracks, the condition and so forth. And Union Pacific's been very cooperative in saying, we've invested a lot in this line. We run our freight. But there is room for some Passenger Trains, too, if you do the right things in terms of dispatching and improvements. You might need to put some sightings in, things like that. Most of the trains in the country operate with both freight trains and Passenger Trains on the same tracks.
Great. Any other questions? Scott? Okay, thank you for being here. Thank you for the information. Good luck on the project. Okay, moving ahead to six C, presentation from Russ Kenny regarding T D S Fiber Optic Project. So, Russ?
And I'll give just a brief introduction. We've been working with T D S on projects since, I believe, November of last year. They've been a good partner so far. I know there's been a number of questions that council members and others have had, and so I thought it'd be a good time to bring them in. Their first phase, which is what they're calling C A, and they're moving towards the next phase, which is E A. So central kind of city hall and southwest. And now they're moving, they're gonna be looking towards going towards the hospital. So I thought it'd be a good time to bring them in. There's a couple of maps in your handout and on the screen and Russ and Paul are here to answer any questions.
Great, and we'll need a motion to waive the rules. Go ahead, Ryland.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules so that they may speak with us.
Okay, is there a second motion? Gretchen?
Second emotion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, come on up to the microphone, push the button on and tell us, tell us all about T D S Fiber.
Well, thanks again for having us tonight. I appreciate you guys' time. Dave, really appreciate your work with us since you came aboard. Makes this partnership work a lot better, but the, kind of the down and dirty is T D S is a telecommunications company that's been in business since the nineteen sixty-sixties, were family-owned, but publicly traded, owned by the Carlson family. Our corporate company is T D S based out of Chicago. T D S Telecom, which is doing this, is the communications portion provider, is based out of Madison, Wisconsin. We're in approximately thirty-five states with over one point two million connections across those states. We're a data, so internet, TV and phone service provider. We do consumer level and then also commercial level products for customers. And what we're doing in Menominee here is we're doing an overbuild of the municipality of Menominee. We're gonna cross paths with as many residences and businesses as we can during the build. And kind of the map, if you could go, can you go to the one more? I think it's the, yeah, so this is our, this is kind of an overbuild. You can see the colors. It's the outline of the municipality. And so we're gonna be building the majority of that municipality. There'll be a couple of areas that we will probably exclude. UW Stout Property is one of them, just because they become a commercial customer in this whole thing. So if they wanted to come to us as a, from a commercial customer, we would then build into them and provide them services. But otherwise, we'll be building all these areas. The areas you see in blue are already, other than the lake, of course, is the areas that are already under construction, okay? And the areas in pink are areas that are off red is what we are, is gonna be coming up over the next two years. So in total, we're looking at a hundred and one million miles of fiber construction. That's, I'm sorry, million? A hundred and one miles of construction with, that's about five hundred and thirty-three thousand feet that we'll be building. If you could go to slide, I think it's slide three. Oh, man, I guess we're not in the same order. So this is what, this is good. So right now, everything in blue again is what we plan to be constructed in twenty twenty-three. And by the winter, we hope to have about thirty-six and a half miles or a hundred ninety-two thousand feet of conduit and fiber placed and ability to serve customers on there. Then if you go to that last slide, you'll see this is where we're at today. And so as of six nine, we have fourteen point four miles or seventy-five thousand feet of conduit placed and that's currently under construction. So our goal is to get this area completed and our network in and out of the market up and ready to serve customers by the end of the summer. And what we do is we will build in what we call work sectors or D F Ns. Dave's gotten familiar with those, but it's blocks of areas within a region. So if you look at that blue area there, there's, there's there's like four different areas in there that we call our work sectors. And what we do is build out a work sector and then we start delivering service in there after that's done. And then we move on to the next one, so on and so forth. We utilize, we partnered with a construction company called T D and I. They're based out of Hudson, Wisconsin. So they're pretty local. They have some, some of their team members are local to the Menominee, live in the town here. So that's been really nice. They have more familiarity with the area. Construction's been going really good, but at the end of the day, when we're said and done, we'll be able to provide, like I say, internet TV service and phone service to the customers. Our, our, all on fiber, our internet service starts at three hundred meg and goes up to eight gig. And then we do a TV, a T D, or I'm sorry, a TV similar to what you would see a cable and then also just standard phone service. As part of the construction, sorry, what we do is we send out mailers ahead of, as we schedule our construction, ahead of time, we send out mailers to the people in those, or the homeowners and or business owners in the areas that we're gonna be constructing in. We've got two mailers that go out to them, letting them know that, hey, we're gonna be coming. Here's who we are. If you have any questions, here's a number you can contact with any questions you may have. Then we follow up about a week before. With the postcard, it looks like caution tape and what it does, it just again says, hey, we're coming, letting you know there's gonna be construction in the area. And again, we've got a number on there if people have any questions. And then the week or as, right before they start construction, our construction teams and Russ's team is going around and they door tag everyone's residence just to make sure they're aware. They do good, try to do really good signage. The T D and I's equipment should be, like their trucks and stuff should be labeled with T D S on them. Because there's other, other construction going on in the market, of course, but they'll be labeled with T D S on them, so you know who they're working for. The phone number we give out is what we call a triage number, because people may call for all certain sorts of reasons. But if there's an issue with construction, we want to follow up on that right away and we do so that those calls come in and get routed over to our construction contractor and our team to get on top of right away. Or they may just have a question about sales or something like that. So we use that number and that team to route those calls accordingly, so people get to the right spot.
I have a question. So right now, you're putting the main lines in, I guess. And then at what point do you start connecting households and or, and then how do you know if a household wants to hook up and how do you go about that?
Yeah, so great question. So we're building out what we call our transport and distribution. Transport is what gets us in and out of the city, right? So we partner with a long-haul company. In this case, will we partnering with Windstream? You guys might be familiar with them. They have stuff in town to get outside and we go, we'll go back to Chicago and back to Madison for our connections. And then also distribution. Distribution is what gets us out to the, to the property lines, all right? So we're building in the right-aways. So we go to the property line. We're not building on private property. So when we get done building those and we're gonna be turning over the first D F N in probably the next two to three weeks, but because our transport piece getting in and out of the market won't be ready till end of, end of summer, probably, is what we're hoping to do. We won't be able to actually serve customers then, but we go out and they do pre-sales and we get pre-sales and then the actual piece between what we build, our team builds is the distribution and transport is the drop that goes to the house. So then there's a, there's a contractor that comes in that works with our order department and they build the drop to the house on pre-orders or actual orders, depending on where that area is and if it's built or if it's not, if it's in the port. It's in progress of being built or it's already built out. it's in progress of being built or it's already built out.
Okay. Does a homeowner have to pay for that drop or how does, how is that included in?
No, the, the, that drop is part of the, um, order. That's, that's, um, yeah. So that they don't have.
Is a homeowner got to be contracted for a certain amount of years in order to get a, a free drop or no?
Um, there, there is some, there is definitely some, uh, deals that they offer in the front end. Um, so they all, but that, from the drop perspective, if you sign up for service, the drop isn't on you, right? There may be unique circumstances of someone's ten miles. I mean, you know, it's really super long driveway or something unique, but your standard drop is not, is part of ordering service.
How many years do you think before fiber is obsolete and the next best thing is, comes to town? I'm sorry.
You know, if you think back to the last, we'll say twenty-three years now and what's changed from, um, you know, technology. And you sit there and you think what's next? I, I wish I could be that guy, but, um, I don't know. I mean, it's, I'm pretty good. I mean, you know, it's, I honestly, fiber's been around for a long time. We just continue to get better at using it. It's the same, the same stuff. It's glass and we just getting really good at using it. We used to build markets with large fibers, like two hundred and eighty-eight fibers to feed a whole, you know, uh, you know, part of your city. Now we're doing it with, you know, twenty-four fibers. Um, it's, you know, the way the technology we, that's been developed around using it to deliver to customers. As real, that's what's evolved. So I see stuff like that continuing to evolve. Like I said, we, we've gone from, over the last three years from delivering our top consumer product was one gig, then it was two gig and now it's eight gig. And, you know, those are the types of things you're going to see continue to grow. And of course, then everything that you can put on it between streaming services and home automation, everything like that. Um, but as far as the technology, I mean, I don't see, again, I would probably be retired by now if I could see that far in the future and understand what's next. But, um, I'd, fiber's, fiber is a, a, a superior product, anything that's even, that I've even ever heard of out there in development.
Great. Riley?
Um, what's the longevity? Cause basically you're burying conduit and then shooting the fiber optic cables through after that's buried, right? So what's the lifespan of all of that? And what are the options for, you know?
It's, yeah, it's twenty plus years. I mean, we have, you know, there's fiber in the ground. So a lot of fiber used to be direct buried. I mean, a lot of stuff we put in twenty-five plus years ago was all direct buried. So it was in the ground, right? We didn't protect it by the conduit. Um, and you know, it's still going today. Uh, it's, it's just, again, it's a great product. As long as you take care of it, um, yeah, and don't, uh, you know, damage it, stuff like that. It's, yeah, the longevity of it is, you know, is superior to anything, you know? If you think, you understand copper facilities, which what's phone service was served over for, for, you know, how many years? There is always susceptible to grounding issues with lightning and storms, you know? There were so many things that would happen, you know, really our biggest menace now is, is people and squirrels. If we have aerial, eh, air, aerial services, oh, we won't have, we may have a few, a little bit of aerial in this market just because there's unique circumstances we have to get around. But, uh, squirrel, you know, stuff like that, that's really it. I mean, fiber is maintenance. I mean, copper, copper maintenance is a full-time job. Fiber maintenance is not. It's just, it's a, just, it's a great product.
Great. Gretchen?
Um, so with the long haul line coming in, what kind of redundancy do we have? Because we have had gone down for four days. And if the whole city goes down for a period of time.
Yeah. Everyone take a break, right? You know, let's detach and, um, so right. So that's a great question. So I'm going to say when we're done, right? Because we're going to turn the market up, sing what we call single threaded. So we'll have one main transport route coming into the market. And then when, when we're done, we will have two diverse paths in and out of the city. And they'll go, they'll get out to the interstate and they'll go two different directions. Um, so that's two. I want, what I failed to mention is we have, we have three cabinets that are placed in different spots throughout the town. That's what we serve our customers out of in each area. Okay? Those cabinets will be, they'll be, um, they'll have diversity back to each other. So think of a, a ring and you got, gets cut between the two cabinets, going to go back around and come talk here, same vice versa. Same goes for our long haul transport. If it gets cut over on the interstate to the west, it's going to go back to the east. So that's all good, right? It's, it's when it leaves our cabinet that it goes out to customers. Then it's not, it's not diverse. That's a, they, we, we couldn't build anything if that was, if we had to do that, right? So I mean, we do have certain business customers that re, that that's a requirement and that that's a cost thing that they pay out of their pocket. Right? If they go into that, but, um, but that's our goal at the end is to be the fully diverse between our cabinets and then out of the market.
And Jeff, you had a?
Yeah. You're talking about, uh, drop coming up to the residential businesses and stuff. Once that drop is made, is it responsibility of the resident or the homeowner to hire somebody to bring that fiber optic from where you stop in the drop to inside their house?
No. So what we'll do is, so like I said, our, our, our role in this is to build the, 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 the main distribution and transport in the market. And then order, it'll be all success based, right? So orders will get placed or pre-orders will get placed. And they'll come in and place a drop between what we built and your house. And then when they come out and hook you up for service, when it's ready, they will, they will bring it into the house. They'll bring it into what we call an O N T. It's an optical network terminal. We go from fiber to ethernet. And so once it gets into your house, we convert it from fiber to ethernet. And then it goes, however you goes through your house, either to an individual modem and router, or depending on what you're going to do, right? We, you know, they, based on the service you get and what you get from us. Yep. And then the drop will be, you know, so let's say you're going to put a fence in on your yard and we have fiber in, you know, out front. And then we also have fiber drop going up to your house. We'll be part of, we're part of eight, one, one, right? So will you call and locates like you're, like a, like a good homer does to put your fence up? And they'll come out, they'll locate the drop, they'll locate the main line out in your property.
Lee?
I assume your main competitor will be Spectrum. Is that correct?
You say competitor?
Yeah.
Just kidding. Yes. And yes, you're right. Sorry.
What kind of market share are you looking at and why? I realize you're not the sales part.
No, no, that's, that's.
Why would a person give up Spectrum and come with you?
We, we have a superior product. Um, price wise, I will tell you that we will be, we'll be competitive. Um, and I will be honest with you and say, you know, like a lot of companies, if you guys think of, uh, for those of you that were around during the, uh, long distance wars, uh, back before two thousand, where there was, you know, who can give you the better, better, sir, you know, better, uh, deal for that time, there is some of that, well, that will happen, right? They will offer you a good deal when we come to town and we will try to match it. And then you'll be, you know, it, there may be some opportunities for down the line that you'll go back to them. But one of the things we found, and I'll get to market share wise, we look for at least, uh, like a thirty-four, thirty-five percent, but we've seen upwards of fifty and more. But from what we've found in a lot of the markets we've gone into, um, whether it be the incumbent phone company, um, AT&T here, right? AT&T, um, we're in a lot of frontier markets and stuff like that. Um, Charter or Spectrum, excuse me, will upgrade, either upgrade facilities or give you more for your money, right? If you're getting X, you know, you're getting this service today, they'll give you this service for, for the same money. They will try to compete on, on their service and, and their, their price to a point. But at the end of the day, um, what we do is our, our service, our internet service, we'll talk internet is, it's, if you get the three hundred, the minimum, which is three hundred meg, it's three hundred meg up and three hundred meg down. Whereas with Charter, you might have three hundred meg up, but you only have like fifty, sixty down. So it's a, it's, 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 it's not this, it's not apples to apples, really. Some, most people don't notice it, right? But it is, if you're really, if you're, um, have any technique, you know, technically adept to, you know, um, internet stuff and, or, you know, technology like that, you'll, you'll see the difference. And, you know, you'll be less scrolling in your services or, you know, anything that you utilize the internet for. But overall, I, I would say we're just a superior product.
Good. Thank you. Ben?
Um, just to piggyback off of what Jeff said, so going into existing houses, do you somehow use the ethernet cabling they already have inside the residence? Or do you have to rewire the entire house for fiber where you want it to go?
It just depends on the house, right? So it, you know, again, some people are very adept and they have their house already, you know, configured for, you know, twenty, twenty-five. And, you know, some people are still in, you know, nineteen, twenty-five in their houses, right? And it's just, it's just the way it is, right? But what we do is we'll place our O N T. That'll be, like I say, that'll be on the inside wall usually. And then we will get the connection to where we're going to place the, the modem. So if, if it's our modem or if it's your modem, then we'll, we'll get that, that ethernet connection there. And then we, again, part of the services that from the sales perspective is, you know, we do offer some, you know, we have wireless mesh systems. We have, you know, different products that, you know, if you, you know, do the monthly rental, we support those, you know, things like that.
Good. Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Riley.
Um, a couple of years ago, there was a lot of concern from residents over five G signals, you know, scrambling their eggs and everything else. Any, any concerns like that, that, uh, we should be educating ourselves on?
No. Oh, for us, for what we're doing? No.
Yeah, that we, you know.
Just, just don't step, don't step in, in front of the construction folks working.
Okay.
No, nothing.
Beams of light going through.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you know, we, um, I mean, we're normal, right? I mean, we've worked with this stuff for a long time. This, I saw that. But no, seriously. And it is, I mean, you know, any of this, like cellular services, you know, the RF they put off, it's, it's really about, if this is the antenna, don't stand here. I mean, you know, that if, could there be some long-term effects of some of the stuffs? It's like high, you know, high voltage, you know, power as well. There, you know, yeah, there could be. I'm not here to speak to that at all. But there, there's nothing, you know, that you would have to worry about with us at all.
Great.
No voltage. I'll just say too, there's like some of the service, some of the, for the way you have to provide service, especially on copper and on coax. Some of that has, uh, really, um, low level voltages in it too. Um, it's, it's a lot of, most have moved away from there. But like with fiber, there, it's all passive. Like our only power, we, we bring fiber to from one of those cabinets out to all these houses. We have splitters that, you know, kind of make our spider web go out. And those are all passive. There's no power in them. They go into our pedestals, our handholds. And, uh, that's, that's, so there's, you know, it's, it's really pretty safe, um, product.
Lee?
Can you tell us what kind of a total investment you're going to have in Menominee when you get done?
Um, a lot. Um, it's, it's, uh, I'll be honest with you off the top of my head, I don't know. Um, I could probably get that information back to Dave. Um, it, it's, I mean, you know, giving you some quick math here. I can't even do quick math. So, um, but, um, yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's millions. Um, it's, it's a lot of investment. And, and I, I'll be honest with you, one of the things TDS has always done, and, um, yeah, about eight and a half million, probably. Um, one of the things TDS has done is, and you'll start to see it if you haven't already, we have, uh, field marketing teams and they get involved with the communities. They get involved in, um, events. They get involved in, um, donating, um, to, we're very, um, we like to be involved with our communities. We're, we're not going anywhere. When we get done building this, you know, we have our, our, our team, our, our local teams that support it, right? They support it forever, right? They, you know, we're not building stuff to sell it. We're building stuff to offer service to TDS. And if any of you, uh, look up Ted or Leroy Carlson, they are, they are the, the, Leroy was our founder and Ted is his son. And they, they are very, very good people and they, they're very in community and is very important to them. So, um, you'll see that they'll get, will start to get involved. So we're also, for those who don't know, we're in this area. We're building out a lot of areas in Wisconsin. Uh, Wisconsin is kind of our, like I say, our home state, but we are in thirty-five other states. But we're doing the same thing that we're doing here right now. We're in Eau Claire, we're in Chippewa, we're in Altoona. Did I miss anybody up there? No, I think I got them all. And then we're doing like, we have the, the corridor, the I ninety corridor from Toma, Sparta, Rockland, Bangor, West Salem and on Alaska. So, you know, we have a lot going on in this area. This has probably been an untouched area for TDS over the, you know, fifty, sixty years we've been around. We, we do a lot of stuff in the central areas like, um, Nacida and over and south. We've done a lot in those areas, but this is really, we're starting to get involved. Our kind of our only existing community that we've been in for quite a few years is over on the river in Alma. Um, we've been there for years and, um, and then Nacida. So, but otherwise, yes, we have a lot going on in these areas. And in, like I say, you'll start to see us, though, you know, there, our field marketing teams will get involved with the chamber of commerce and do stuff like that.
Good. Great. Well, we appreciate you being here tonight and filling us in on, uh, we have one more question. Mary, go ahead.
Well, it's not really a question. I just have to, um, commend your guys and gals. If you have gals working for you, you guys work in some pretty miserable situations in the rain and the ice and the snow and the heat and.
And, and you do. Thank you and appreciate that. And we will give that feedback to our contractor as well. There, it's a, I mean, we, we have really high expectations of our teams that are in our part. That's why I say we're, we partner with the city, but we're partnering with our contractor too, to represent us, right? It's not just, you're not in there just to get a product in the ground. You're representing us. If you talk to people in the street, you better be representing TDS. I mean, I, you might not have an answer on, well, how much does service cost? But you're representing us and you treat people like they should be treated. So again, we have numbers to call on, on these, this information that comes out. If anybody ever has any issues, we will, we'll take care of it right away. We don't, it's, it's, we don't go, we're not going away. Like I said, we, 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 this is going to be a home for us and we're going to continue to grow this area as this area grows. So, um, I will mention though, and that's, I'm sorry to take too much time, but, you will notice over, over the winter, winter construction is hard, but we're trying to get through this as quickly as we can, right? To, to minimize the, um, you know, the, the day-to-day, you know, inconveniences that people may have. So over the winter, we do work and the restoration on that doesn't come, if we're doing something in January, we, we'll do a, a really like rough restoration, holes will be filled in, but we're not going to give you the final product until like May, once the, once we know winter's gone and we can get out there and the frost is gone and everything. So just, you know, again, if you guys, if, if it's something on your property and you have a question, just, just call and ask us. You know, we, they create a ticket, we'll, we'll put that ticket on hold. If that's a restoration issue, we'll make sure that we're following up. But again, systems, people, no one's perfect. You know, if, if, if you don't see us and it's, you know, it's late May, like call us back. We're, we're, we're definitely there. We want to, we want everyone to, you know, again, I think our product will be good. We'll, we'll speak for itself, but getting to that is the hard part with construction, like anything.
Great. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here. Uh, thank you for the information. I think you answered your questions well. So good luck to you. And, uh, yeah, if we, uh, we need any more assistance, we'll reach out to you, but, uh,
Sounds good.
Good luck and we'll see you here in Menominee.
And I know Russ meets, you guys meet face to face every two weeks to go over stuff. So Dave's been a great, great partner in this. Like I said, to help us work through this and make sure it's a, we're doing a, you know, doing the right thing for the city as well. So.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. That moves us down to, uh, six D proposed title five, chapter one ordinance amendment regarding lawn maintenance. Uh, this is a possible ordinance adoption, but, uh, before we get to that point, I'll have Dave, uh, if you want to bring us up to speed.
Yeah. So we did kind of a pilot this year for no more May. Um, we had folks sign up. So we had some idea on how many people were intentionally participating in no more May. I'm sure we had some folks that participated without signing up, but we had two hundred and seventy households that signed up for that. I think there's probably more that, that contributed to, uh, um, to the folks that actually, uh, participated. Um, we thought it would be appropriate to have a discussion about twenty twenty-four and beyond. Um, one way to do that is to make the revisions that Ben has so eloquently put into the ordinance that's in your packet for consideration. Uh, essentially we, we try to keep it simple. We moved the enforcement date of the lawn, lawn height restrictions from, uh, what is currently, which is I believe May fifteenth, we just moved it to, uh, June first. So that'd be a good time to have the discussion now rather than in, uh, March. If there were people that had a very strong opinion on how things looked here on May thirty-first, this would be a good time to have the discussion. Um, if you're okay with this, the, um, we could do an introduction, we could do an introduction and waving first and second readings. It's up to you folks on how you want to proceed, if you wanted to proceed.
Yeah. And if you do want an ordinance on the books regarding this, before we just had a resolution, I believe, uh, to move this forward. Uh, we could continue with the resolution in years to come, but that would take a resolution each year prior to no more May. Or we could put it on the books as an ordinance, uh, like, like David said, we could, um, introduce the ordinance. We could have a first reading. We could bring it back for a second or, and a third, or we can move the whole thing through tonight as, uh, one ordinance and just, uh, be done. So I guess, uh, I would just, uh, leave it with that. Uh, I don't know. Eric, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes. Thank you, Mary. So the administration here strongly supports that if, if we're going to continue with this practice, we should adjust our ordinance to reflect it. And frankly, I think it's very helpful for us, certainly for the pollination piece too. It also helps with water supplies until we can, uh, build a new well. So certainly we would encourage you to. So certainly we would encourage you to adopt it. If you would rather continue with what we're doing right now, that's fine too as well.
Okay. So I'm going to give it back to the council. If anybody wants to move this forward, they would take an introduction from a council member. Cody?
I'd like to introduce this ordinance.
Introduce, if you want to hand that, you have that down. Okay, okay, great. With that being said, we would need a motion to waive the first reading and that would be Lee, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to not read it.
A way, yeah, not read it. Okay, waive the first reading. All right, thank you. Say your second, Gretchen.
I'll second with motion.
Okay, motion made in second to waive the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, thank you. And go ahead, Ryan.
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion? Penny?
I will second Ryan's motion.
Okay, motion made in second to waive the first second reading. All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then Cody, do you want to make the motion to adopt the set ordinance? Go ahead.
Sure. I'll move to adopt the ordinance as proposed for making no more May permanent.
Very good. Motion's been made. Randy, go ahead, please.
I'll second Cody's.
Motion's been made in second to adopt said ordinance. Any discussions? Go ahead.
I'm, I'm in favor of it. I'm just curious how many complaints we had like after June one.
I don't know. Dave, did we have any or? I don't know if we had any.
There has, there has been several properties that we've had sent out notices to the folks that have not. Or we haven't, at this point, we haven't ticketed anyone for that, other than the marathon station on the east side of town. We did send out a citation. That's been going on for over a year at this point.
The fire station?
The, no, the marathon gas station.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to get those guys out there. All right. Well, I, I'm good. I got my wife a new mower, so we're good. She likes it. That's what she, she don't, she won't let me do it. So that being said, we have a motion on the, and a second on the floor to adopt this ordinance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. And moving on to six E. Proposed title eight, chapter one ordinance amendment regarding law and irrigation restrictions and penalties for violations. I'm going to give this back to Dave again. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah. So after your last meeting, that following Wednesday, we nearly ran out of water. I got to be honest with you. We had, we had some severe, very, pretty severe usage that week. We, at the time, we're still flushing our water mains. And so we got to the point where we were concerned about our water towers being empty. We were at about twenty-three feet, twenty-four feet. The midline of those towers is twenty feet. And that's when we start getting issues with providing enough fire protection at the higher parts of our city. And if we get below that midline, we very quickly run out of water because as you imagine, it's a big bowl. And as you get lower than the midline, it, it very quickly runs out. And so we, I spent pretty much all day Thursday calling our major users, the people that had irrigation meters, asking them to try to stop irrigating for at least a week here. So to give us a fighting chance at letting our wells catch back up. They were all great, aside from, I think we had one or two that had said they would do something and we noticed they hadn't, but I, I wanted specifically call out UWA Stout. They, other than their playfields, they, they stopped watering entirely. And that was, I really appreciated that. They're, they're one of our major users and they were, they were excellent. So. So as, as we went through this, what I would call a crisis, we put out notices to the residents on our website. We also looked at our ordinance to see what, you know, what, what do we have? What's our next, what's the next bullet in our gun here? And, and the next bullet was to do a, a complete watering ban. As we go through our ordinance, we, with time and until tonight, if you, if you pass the ordinance that we have in front of you, we, we do not at this time have the ability to find anyone for violating our, or even with our, with a ban, we don't have the ability to find them anything. The court, the ordinance currently says, as enumerated in this code, and then it's not enumerated in the code. So, so what we're asking for tonight is, is to look at some ordinance changes that would allow us to have a little teeth in our ordinance so that when folks just blatantly violate the ordinance after being A notified in the newspaper and B notified personally, that we have the ability to, to do something to compel them to comply. So the ordinance changes that are in the code, we have more specifically adopted the alternate side irrigation restrictions in section eight, one, six, limitations on lawn irrigation. We did include some exceptions that I found in some other communities' codes. Handheld sprays, watering cans, drip irrigation, those sorts of things. That to be honest with you, we weren't going to go chase down somebody that was holding a hose out and spraying their kids. We weren't going to do that anyway. And so we put it in the code that we would not do it. We've also included an exemption for new lawns so that they can, they can for twenty-eight days again, water, water in a new lawn. We've also included a exception for sport fields so that we, you know, our sport fields are used by children and adults in a way that if we, if they completely go dormant, it could be dangerous. And so we wanted to make sure that our sport fields are included. So that includes not only UW Stout, City of Menominee and Menominee School District. And then the last is that we specifically included a section of folks that have rain cisterns, rain barrels, private irrigation wells, that sort of thing. We excluded those from the limitations. So that, that kind of sets forth the limitations. We added a section that we are going to publish in the newspaper when a, when a resolution for alternate side irrigation is, is adopted by, by this body or by the, the mayor is also able to set that. And also when we get into a full ban, we would do a publication with the alternate side irrigation. And with the ban, if someone, if we know that someone's not complying with the irrigation, we would then send them a letter or personally talk with them to let them, just give me a reminder. I, I have no desire to be sending out hundred and fifty dollar tickets to people over and over again. That's not the intention of this. The intention is to try to reduce the amount of irrigation used. And, and if we can do that by reminders, that would be better. The next section is the, the penalties if someone were to not comply. There's kind of two layers of penalties. The first layer of penalties, which is not really related to irrigation, is waste of water, theft of water, that sort of thing. The five hundred dollar forfeiture is, I think, the same that we use in our sewer code. Ben, maybe Ben can recall. I believe that's the same penalty in our sewer code. So if someone is opening a hydrant and, and taking water and stealing it, we, we need to have some teeth to not allowing them to do that. So we have a provision there for a five hundred dollar forfeiture. And then for the, the irrigation portions, it's, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. That's the, essentially the minimum ticket that we can issue. And so we felt that that, we didn't want to set that as a very high bar because that would just discourage us from, from actually using it. So we wanted it to be a reasonable amount. And then we added, because Ben is our attorney and is very good at his job, we added a severability clause. That section is just if there's any other portions of the code that is a problem that doesn't kill the entire goal.
Hey, Ben?
I do just want to reemphasize what Dave said too. He won't just go straight into doing tickets. He will talk, he will notify either in writing person or email with the individuals not looking to be punitive on this. It's just, we run into situations, what he was talking about, if the water's low, ability to do the alternate side or complete ban, talk with the individuals. And then after that point, if they're still not compliant, that's when the violations would go up.
Well, and that's just iterates how important it is to have another well. You know, our wells were running, I think Dave said, in order to fill our towers, we'd have to be running twenty-seven hours a day. That doesn't equate quite right, twenty-seven versus twenty-four. So basically impossible to be able to fill our towers. It's amazing how much water capacity those towers have and how much water use. I mean, it's in the millions of gallons, right, Dave?
Yeah, I think two of them are five hundred thousand gallon. I think the third one is four hundred thousand. So one point, one point four million gallons are in the air at any given time.
But then our pumps are running. I mean.
Yes. So we were, so that the week of the fifth, we ran our, all, all three of our wells ran for, I think, four or five straight days. Finally, after the rainfall on Saturday, the what, the tenth, I think it was, ninth or tenth, they, they finally caught back up, but they were, they were running all out for almost a week.
Right. That's, that's hard on the pumps, hard on the wells, hard on the system. And we would not want to have a drawdown to the point where we had to do a complete water ban because then you had to chlorinate and everything else, the entire system. So again, reiterating the fact that we do need another well eventually, maybe even possibly another tower eventually. But that's in the works. So I think in this regard, I think this is an important ordinance. Jeff?
Yeah, I'm kind of speaking from experience. We're going to do anything about people with swimming pools and filling them because last year I erected an above-ground pool and I filled it with the city water. And I was told that if I called the city, that I would not have to pay for that water because that's based on the amount of our sewage is based on the amount of water we use. So that water I used to fill my pool was not actually creating sewage. So they went back and adjusted my water bill on the average of what I used the six months prior before I fill my pool. And that was a forty-five hundred gallon pool.
Yeah. So the, the, they may not explain it well enough to you. So you, you pay for all the water that goes through your meter. The sewer is also based on your water meter. And in cases where we know it doesn't go down the sewer. So irrigation, if they have a special meter or, or in the case of a pool where you know it's going into the pool, you didn't pay for the sewer portion of that water, but you did pay for the water portion of that water. That makes sense.
Great. Any other questions on this? Otherwise, if somebody wanted to introduce the ordinance, we could do that at this time. Chad, go ahead.
I just think that if we lowered, it's just my opinion, if we lowered it, if we lowered the fine down and actually gave out tickets instead of a hundred and fifty dollars and not giving out tickets, I think that would be having more of, more of an effect.
I think there's a, a certain situation Ben can answer. There's court costs, other things.
So I think the minimum you can go down is one fourteen fifty. That's what costs for any ticket.
Well, so we can do like a thirty dollar ticket and just hand them out like candy.
No, because if somebody wants to challenge it, they have to have the ability to, and that would go through the court system.
Good thought, though. I had the same thought, but I got cornered. That's why I knew Ben had the answer because I already asked that question. But if anybody would like to support this and introduce it, this is the opportunity to do so. Go ahead, Jen.
I'd like to make a motion to support this.
It's just an introduction. So you, you would be introducing the ordinance.
I'd like to introduce the ordinance.
Okay, introduce the ordinance is by Chad. Got that? Okay. Now we need a motion to waive the first reading. Ryan?
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion? Mary?
I'll second Ryan's motion.
Okay, motion made in second to waive the first reading. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Now we need a motion to waive the second reading. Penny?
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading.
Very good. Jeff?
I'll second Penny's motion.
Motion's been made in second to waive the second reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. And now a motion to adopt. Chad, do you want that opportunity?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt said ordinance with several penalties as shown.
Very good. Okay, Ben? Okay, Ryan?
I will second Chad's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now we're moving it down to proposed resolution regarding alternate side lawn irrigation restrictions. And this is just the resolution portion of this, Dave. Go ahead.
Yeah. So the ordinance that you just adopted allowed us to make a determination of alternate side irrigation restrictions. We did back in April do irrigation restrictions because we just adopted the ordinance and the ordinance has some different provisions than occurred back in April or existed back in April. Ben thought it was appropriate to do a, a new resolution and I, I concur with that. So this, this is a very similar resolution to what you adopted in April. But because we, we talked about, I added a section in there about the forfeitures at the end of, in case of non-compliance. So.
Sounds pretty simple. So I guess if this is the opportunity then for council, go ahead, Ryan.
I would like to make a motion to introduce this ordinance.
Nope, it's the resolution.
Could be adoption of the resolution.
There you go.
Uh, yeah, I would make a motion to approve the resolution.
Very good. And is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I can second Ryan's motion.
Okay, motion been made in second to a, to adopt the resolution. Is there any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving down to six G. Proposed, proposed carbon reduction program grant acceptance. You know, Megan, you have done an outstanding job with this. So I'm going to hand the microphone over to Megan. Megan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in your packet is a grant agreement from the DOT for the carbon reduction program. This is to update all of our municipally owned street lighting to LED. And then also to meter the majority of our electrical cabinets for those streetlights, which will allow us to pay for the actual electricity used versus paying by the light fixture itself. So the, the grant agreement is in your packet. We are looking for a motion to approve and accept the funds. It's about an eighty, one hundred eighty-four thousand dollar project and we'll have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Well, that will be federal grant funds. Working with the DOT to pass this through. And we had a kickoff meeting last week with several of the other municipalities in the Northwest region of DOT that have received the same funding. So Eau Claire, Chippewa Falls, us in the city of Superior, and we're all doing basically the same project, updating municipal street lighting. So working together kind of as a cohort through this grant process that they are looking to complete by the end of the year, hopefully.
Great information, great news. You know, this is, you know, the groundwork being laid for carbon neutral. Not only that, but it is a, a project that, you know, we get grant funding for this project to kickstart it. We will have to put some money into this. But overall, that's a great project. And thank you, Megan, for the hard work to get this, you know, acquired. So Ryan?
Um, I have two questions. I guess the first one is, do you know how much this change will save us?
Yeah. So estimated the, depending, it depends on the exact fixtures we end up with, which we're trying to figure out which those fixtures will be because they have to be bio-American compliant. We are also working very closely with Excel Energy and focus on energy to make sure we qualify for the best rebates that we can. So trying to find a unicorn light bulb that fits all the boxes, that also has to go out to bed. So working through that, but estimated in the ballpark of thirty thousand dollars annually. Yes.
Oh, that's a big, that's the savings portion.
Correct.
My other question is on the, if each of these streetlights is individually metered, does, does Excel do a similar thing as our home electric meters where they charge as a flat meter fee on top of where they keep raising up the meter fee?
Yeah. That's a great question. So the, the are centrally located electrical cabinets. So it's a run of streetlights to a single cabinet. I believe we're upgrading seventeen or eighteen cabinets to be metered. So yes, there is a flat meter fee per month. But then there's, you know, numerous fixtures on that meter. And the savings for the, the annual savings was calculated with that.
Okay, so it's only seventeen meter fees, not three hundred and twenty-five.
Correct, correct.
Great questions. Hope I go, good questions. Thank you. Good answers. Okay, so that brings us back to if anybody would like to make a motion to implement the acceptance of the grant. Penny?
I will make a motion to authorize the implementation of the grant as presented.
And Lee?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right. And with that, any other discussion? We will be spending some money on this, so we will take a roll call vote.
Luther?
Yeah.
First in?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Schwebs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Somerville?
Great, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to six H. Let's Paint the Town Special Event Permit. And Sylvia is here this evening to talk a little bit about this. So if somebody'd like to make a motion to waive the rules, Ryan?
Yep, I would make a motion to waive the rules. So Sylvia may speak.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Mary?
I'll second Ryan's motion.
Motion made in second to waive the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hi Sylvia, you've got a great event lined up on July twenty-second.
And we do.
Tell us about that.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to talk to you about the summer event. Let's Paint the Town. This is year three for Let's Paint the Town. And my goodness, have we grown from what started out as an effort to bring people into the community and to have a collaborative community event downtown. On for year one was a sidewalk sale that brought people to the downtown and supported the downtown businesses. Year two, we expanded some more and we closed down Main Street, you may recall. And then we added food. Um, and then we added food courts and we added more vendors in the street. And it has continued to grow into what I think is an amazing event. Um, clearly there has been some demand and interest on the part of the public businesses um, and general community and having a summer event. Because we, um, now have something I can only describe as being organic. It just continues to grow. So we are working with the city. We're working with downtown Menominee. Uh, we're working with businesses and we've been fortunate enough to have, um, probably about thirty sponsors, mostly corporate sponsors here who have helped us with expenses and with sponsorships. Um, and we have, um, an event lined up that will, uh, run through, uh, much of the downtown. We hopefully bringing in somewhere between, we're estimating three and five thousand people to downtown Menominee. So, um, working with the, um, city, we have laid out a plan to close Wilson Avenue um, from Fourth Street to, um, essentially the courthouse through Wilson Park. And to close some of the, uh, ancillary, um, streets to Wilson. Uh, uh, we will be having, um, uh, events that pull people back onto Main Street where we're working with downtown Menominee and with the downtown merchants to have more sidewalk sales and specials. And generally to bring people together, working together, uh, to support, uh, Menominee. Um, so I'm sure I'll forget something in all of this. So, um, yeah, um, excuse me if I leave somebody out. But we have beginning on Wilson, uh, Fourth and Wilson, um, uh, over a hundred vendors. And these vendors are primarily local, um, small business owners who are artisans, who are antique dealers, um, who are community organizations seeking a place to hand out information, have raffles and so forth. Um, and, um, these are booths that, um, that extend down fourth, bringing people from Main Street down into the event and back onto Main Street. Uh, we have, um, craft demonstrations. We've got about, as of this morning, about fifteen food vendors who will be on Sixth Street and in the Olson Funeral Home parking lot. And I will say, um, that the businesses along this route have been so cooperative and so supportive of what we're doing and we greatly appreciate that. Um, and as we move along through there, we've got, um, in Wilson Park, um, Cedar Brook Church is providing their bouncy house. We have Jacksey the Clown who's doing face painting. And we're working with the farmer's market who will be there in the morning. Um, and, um, also where we're working with, um, the, uh, some of the other organizations in town, the Irish, uh, dancers will be performing. Um, the, um, Menominee Theater Guild has asked to have their cast, which is made up of children for their immersion program. Um, and they're doing the Little Mermaid. They're going to be in costume. And they will be circulating through the crowd, um, handing out, uh, information on that. And we're also really fortunate to have the Red Cedar Film Festival involved this year. The events kind of coincide which, with each other. Their event begins on Thursday. But they will be having a, um, film, which is free to the public, um, at nine o'clock, uh, following our event. So our event starts really at eight o'clock when people start setting up for the event. The event itself starts at ten, uh, runs until five. And then, of course, we have, uh, cleanup. But probably the highlight for most people is the music. We'll start the day off at ten o'clock with a Luddington Guard Band playing. And then at three o'clock, Chris Cruzy is performing in the band show. And all of this is free to the public, thanks to the corporate sponsors, thanks to the businesses that are participating. Um, and, um, I think, I, I think I've hit most of, most of the things, but, um, anyway, it's, it's a huge event. I see it growing because even as we're trying to close down new events, people are calling us and saying, can I get on board now? I know it's kind of late, but I'd sure like to be part of your event. So, um, I think this is something that Menominee has maybe had in, uh, a desire for, for some time to have some kind of big summer event. So I'm, I'm, uh, very pleased. Um, I know you have the packet in front of you. Um, if there are questions or comments, um, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Great job, Sylvia. And I know you guys have put a lot of work into this, so it looks to me like it's going to be a great event, uh, with the car show and Chris Cruzy and Luddington. Yeah, car show, Luddington Guard Band, Chris Cruzy, um, you know, vendors on the streets, uh, downtown, uh, you know, everybody's, um, the restaurants and bars will be open also with, uh, things available on Main Street also, uh, stores participating. Um, great participation by a lot of people. So good job. Is there any questions for Sylvia this evening? We're looking forward to this. The only one thing I think you missed was the date, July twenty-second?
July twenty-second from ten until five downtown Menominee.
Super good. And hopefully next year it'll be a two-day and after that a three-day event. Also in, in, uh, running in, uh, parallel with this is the Film Festival. Uh, that's happening and they'll be viewing films at the Mabel Tainer. Uh, I think there's a charge, uh, I can't remember what the charge R is. But if you want more information about that, you could either reach out to, uh, Downtown Menominee, uh, talk to Phil Lyons, or you could contact the Mabel Tainer too. But the Film Festival is also happening on that same day. So we're going to be working with each other. Um, I believe they're also showing films, uh, movies at Wilson Park that evening. Is that correct?
Yes, they will be showing a movie and I've forgotten the name of it. I apologize. At nine o'clock in the park. And again, everything, everything that is happening is part of Let's Paint the Town is free. And again, as Mayor Canax said, there are, if you wish to see the films at the Mabel Tainer that are part of the Red Cedar Film Festival, there is a charge. They have a website, I understand, where you can go and buy tickets.
Right. The cool thing is, there's going to be a lot of our town people and we're going to be showing off Menominee that day. Uh, and, and, uh, so that's just a great thing. So congratulations. So now we just need to move forward and approve, uh, the, uh, Let's Paint the Town Special Event Permit Packet. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to support this, now is your opportunity to do so. Penny?
I will make a motion supporting the Let's Paint the Town event on July twenty-second.
Great. Is there a second to that motion? Mary?
I'll second Penny's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to six I, Red Cedar Film Festival Special Event Permit. Um, I don't see a representative here for that. However, that is going to be the same day or same weekend, I should say. I think it's a couple of days. But, um, again, another great event. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to support this, now is your opportunity to do so. Ryland?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the Red Cedar Film Festival Special Event Permit.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Uh, Chad?
Like the second Mr. Ryland's motion?
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Six J, Foundations Therapies Anniversary Celebration and Open House Special Events Permit. Um, I think that's pretty cool. Foundation Therapies, um, has got an anniversary already. Didn't seem like a year, but, uh, they're doing well. Uh, Chief, do you want to elaborate a little bit on that? I think you've got some, some input on that a little bit. So go ahead.
Yeah, our Foundation Therapy has been growing and they want to have their, their celebration and open house. It's their tenth year anniversary and, uh, they've been, they've been great for our community. So where we feel strongly here at administration that we support this event.
Well, and they're right here in our building now too. So that even makes it better.
And that's right.
So great. Okay, Lee, go ahead, please.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Uh, Mary?
I will second Lee's motion.
Okay, motion approved, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. And six K, Proposed Resolution to Borrow Money from the Board Commissions of Public Lands. And, uh, this is an Estover's terrorist payment, which we will, uh, borrow the money, but then get paid and paid back. It's a complicated scenario. So I'll let, uh, the chief explain it. Chief?
Okay, so administration has worked with elders and we do have Sean Lentz on the line too as well on financing to help make our Estover payments. This is Estover as part of our TID seventeen. And, uh, part of our agreement, we have a variety of payments that we need to make, uh, for approximately five hundred and five thousand in addition to the pay-go formula afterwards. The, uh, the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands offers an opportunity as for, for us to have a twenty-year obligation loan for a five percent interest rate. And it's one of the best, best types of loans that we can get. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Sean Lentz here, if he's still with us on the line, to be able to explain a little bit about why this particular loan was chosen and, and why it would be beneficial for us. Oh, and then, uh, we will also need to waive the rules in order to have Sean speak.
Let's do that now. Um, Lee?
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion been made to waive the rules. Is there a second to that motion, Ryland?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Thank you. Is it, um, in favor of said motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, is Sean on the line? Sean, are you out there? If not?
He's got unmute.
Oh, there you go. We're working on it, Sean. We're unmuted on our end. Are you unmuted on your end?
I think I am, Eric. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, I think Eric covered, uh, a great majority of this. Uh, the Estover Terrace Project and the Development Agreement requires that as they achieve certain milestones, the city will need to make, uh, contribution payments to them. The Board of Commissioners of Public Lands offers the State Trust Fund Loan Program and that I think is a real good fit here. Uh, in fact, we've been working with Eric and the rest of the city staff for probably a little over a month. And we did put in an application, uh, quite some time ago. Uh, the interest rate at the time was five percent and they have maintained that rate for this project, even though their rates, the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands rates have gone up to five and a half percent since we started the process with them. But what we'll be doing with this, Mayor and Council, is again, funding the expenses upfront. And then as tax increment district number seventeen and the Estover Terrace project begins to create new tax revenue that comes into the city, we will be using that revenue to pay the annual debt service on this loan, uh, starting with the first payment in two thousand twenty-five. As another benefit of this program for this particular project is we, we won't have to make a payment until twenty twenty-five for the first. And that'll match up much better with, as revenue begins to come in, in the tax increment district. And finally, we'll be locking in the interest rate for twenty years, up to twenty years at the five percent level. But each year, the city will have the opportunity to pay this note off early if significant, uh, sufficient revenues, uh, materialize in the tax increment district. And we think with the development potential in the district, that that is likely that we'll be looking at uh, being able to prepay this loan before having to go all the way out for the full twenty years. What's needed with the council tonight is approval of sending this resolution back to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. And then they'll go through their internal policy or process to approve it and make funding available to us later this summer, uh, right around, I think September first is when we intend to draw the money from the program. So, uh, Mayor, if there's any questions of yourself or the council, I'd be happy to answer those.
Sure, I know Gretchen. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Gretchen's got her, uh, hand up. She'd like to ask a question.
So if, heaven forbid, there wasn't, uh, revenue found from, from the tit, this project, um, where would the, uh, payment come from? Would it become from our general fund, do you think, or? Or other TID?
We, we would have to promise to pay it through our levy.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we would probably use, um, either the general fund or, um, ex, extra, what are, what's that?
Well, we can, we can utilize contingency funds and then also from the levy as part of the document for the application. We have to promise that, that if for whatever reason it fails, then we would have to, we would have to raise the money on our own. And that would come through operational levy.
However, I don't think this is going to be a problem. Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, also, uh, the development agreement requires them to provide a certain value and, and they agreed to pay the taxes on that value. And so if for some reason, um, they were to, um, not fully build out there, they, they still are on the hook for those taxes. Now we'd have to follow through on, on, and making, enforcing our contract with them, but we do have some ability there.
Right. So it's, it's guaranteed, basically.
It, it's, it, it's a very solid option for us in the, uh, the agreement that we originally signed. Because in order to get any funds back, they have to trip those certain benchmarks. So that's what'll, what'll cause them to get payments. So if, if they want to get paid, they gotta do the work. And if they don't want to get paid, then, uh, don't do the work. But then, then we could figure out how we would want to pay that back then.
Okay, now if you had noticed the form, it's a little different than normal. So we would need a, um, alderperson to, uh, present this. So, um, we would put your name on it and then an alderperson, perhaps the same alderperson would move to adopt this. So if somebody would like to present this, and then we can move it forward for adoption. Mary is council president. Would you like that opportunity?
I would. I would make a motion to, to adopt.
That's fine, yes.
Adopt this.
Yeah, so you'll present it technically and then a motion to adopt.
Correct. Yes.
And, and, okay. So, um, so you're willing to present this and any discussion, and then you're willing to adopt this?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a second to that motion. Is there a second to that? Ryland?
I will second Mary's motion.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, any other additional discussion? And then we will need a roll call vote on this as we need to fill in the, how you voted. So. Kate?
First in?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. And that brings us down to, uh, six I, uh, review wastewater utility request to sell surplus equipment. Uh, Paul's here. If we have any questions or I always like to see him speak anyways because he's so fluent at the microphone. Um, so we have some extra equipment, uh, to, uh, liquidate and, uh, I'll let you tell us about that.
No, there's not much really. We're trying to clean up our yard. We have a, a small, uh, shed that was built by someone at the street department. We housed our final effluent sampler in there during construction. And now we're done with it and we just kind of want to get rid of it. And it's good lumber. We thought maybe someone could, uh, use it if we put it on the state auction website, see if we get any bids. And there's some benefit to having someone come and haul it away. And then we've got some concrete block that was left over from the EQ building, um, some kind of brownish concrete block. It was the wrong color. The contractor left it behind, some excess bricks and see if any, if there's any interest and, and then the, the benefit of someone hauling it away rather than just stockpiling it in our yard and try to get things cleaned up a little bit.
Great. All right. Does anybody want to support this with a motion? Jeff?
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the surplus items.
Great. I know you, what you're thinking. You're getting rid of this stuff. Microphone? For ten, for ten, for ten, for, for ten thousand dollars, I think you could put it anywhere. Okay, thank you, Paul. Is there's a second to Jeff's motion? Lee, go ahead, please.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. No budget transfers tonight. We're going to move right on through the mayor's report kind of quick. Um, a couple of quick little things. Tangwood Golf, I had their grand opening in ribbon cutting this last weekend. Uh, it looked like to me it was successful. So, uh, that's cool to have another business opening. Uh, he, uh, Mark said he, uh, he has hired thirty-five employees as of now to get things up and rolling. Didn't want to be short-staffed. So that was cool. Um, I have issued two mayoral proclamations this evening. The first proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month to be, bring awareness to the issues facing the LGBTQ plus community. I also want to thank councilperson Gents for, uh, suggesting this proclamation. The second proclamation recognized today, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as Juneteenth Freedom Day. Um, Wakanda Park has been. Wacanda Park has been very busy place the last couple of weekends. Two weekends ago, Menominee Youth Baseball Hosted Tournament with sixteen teams from as far away as Mankato, Minnesota. And this past weekend, Junior Mustang softball hosted tournament with forty teams from as far away as Farmington, Minnesota. And it's great to see folks enjoying our parks, restaurants and hotels. The one thing, the caveat I want to add to that is three years ago, our ball fields were a mess. And we were getting complaints and, and, and it just seemed like it need, something needed to be done. The city council made it possible for those ball fields to be renovated. And there was a lot of work and a lot of money put into it, and the Youth Baseball Association and others got behind it. The, the school district got behind it, a lot of volunteers down there got behind it. But most importantly, you guys and gals got behind it and made it possible. So without the city council's support, these youth tournaments and these ball tournaments would not be happening at Wacanda Park. So I just want you to know how important the decisions that you make here as a city council translates out to Menominee and, and all of our youth and everything going on. I know the water park's been extremely busy as, as well. Menominee right now is doing very well in a lot of areas. I know Eric has been extremely busy. My desk needs to be cleaned off again. And I know Megan's been doing very well in her position, Dave's done a great job in his. And it, and that just goes right on down the line. Right to the, the sewer plant, the water department, the street department, the parks and rec, the library. I mean, right now you should be very proud of your city because Menominee is doing very, very well in every attribute. So with that, I will, I'll hand it off to Dave and Megan and then back up to Eric. And then we'll go around the room. Dave?
Yeah, I just want to give an update on six oh four Wilson Avenue. So on Friday, we issued a razor repair order on the building. We gave them a deadline of August twenty-fifth to either correct the structural issues or tear down the older portion of that building. That date was based on Stouts Moving is, starts on August twenty-sixth. So we, we felt that was an appropriate date. I think that was about seventy-one days, that's a pretty reasonable timeline. I think we usually go thirty days, but we felt that that was appropriate in this situation. So I just want to, I'm sure you're asking people, you've been hearing questions. I just wanted to let you know that things are moving forward.
I just want to give a quick update from our electronics recycling event. Our vendor got back to us with the tonnage that was collected during the event. So we collected twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-three pounds of electronics that were recycled.
That's pretty incredible, chief.
Yeah, so included in, or one of the things I want to talk about is that the police department is going to continue to have National Night Out. However, it is going to be shifted closer to City Hall and you could expect an event packet to be coming your way. Reason is because of, of the parking lot that they normally utilize at Cedar Corp. It's just what the issues going on doesn't make it safe right now for the time being. But it's still going to happen, so they're going to look at moving it and maybe closing some roads that are closer to City Hall. And then also, I just want to point out too, what a great job Megan has been doing when it comes to acquiring all the grants that she has done. She, she has absolutely helped transform our city in terms of trying to eliminate basically our carbon footprint and the costs that are coming in. I think it was kind of glossed over in the last grant. When it comes to the light bulbs, essentially, yes, we do have a match. But when it comes down to all the rebates, it's only going to cost us a handful of thousand dollars when it's all said and done. And that's really because of the diligent work that she has done. So I just wanted to really point that out, that those, those grants and the administration of them take a tremendous amount of time and effort. And she has really put a lot of time and effort into it and it shows. So I just wanted to reiterate that, she deserves some thanks.
Well, and I want to enter into the fact that I offered to help her and she, and she turned me down, so I figured she had it under control.
You can help Brock change the light bulbs.
That, yeah, yeah, I could. That I could probably handle. How, how many mayors does it take to, yeah. You were thinking, okay. Any communication from council? Council? Katie, anything from Kate? No, okay. All right, all right, well, we're just going to keep on going then. Claims, if we want to pay the bills, if you need a motion to do so, and there's a current. He is current, yes. Okay, Mary, oh, I thought you had your hand up. Oh, you moved. There you go.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Great, thank you. Is there a second to Mary's motion? Penny?
I will second Mary's motion.
Great, motion made, seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg? Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
First up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and then there's an updated license list. Eric, do you want to explain some of that maybe? There's, the only thing is, or Kate maybe, is the pending publication on six twenty-one and no request for denial received. So that's the only, that's the only hiccup? Go ahead then.
Yeah, so as part of the licenses, they need to be published on the paper. Kate sent that into the paper and somehow it got missed by the paper on it. So it would basically just be a motion approving the license renewals, a normal license list and license renewals for twenty-four. Pending publication on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three and no request for denial received.
Good job, so that's whatever Ben said. Motion as presented. That would work. Okay, anybody want to make that motion? Penny?
I will make a motion as regarding licenses as presented and worded by Ben.
There you go, good job. And is there a second to that motion? Go ahead, Eric.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded, Ryland?
I have a quick question. Do we have, is it default that we basically have to approve all these? The one that I am having trouble with is the GFL Waste License, because I've had a lot of complaints from people about how they're running their business, including some drivers that have been harassing residents. And I've made a couple of calls to the company on people's beheaths. And so I can't in good conscience, conscience support their license renewal.
Understand on that, I would say probably bring that information to the administration. I think there would be a process to do a non-renewal or removal of the license on it that wasn't properly noticed or anything today. I would say bring that forward, we can definitely take a look at it, see what corrective actions we could take. I would say, I mean, as tonight's to go forward with it, but I would bring that stuff towards administration to Eric and Dave and the mayor and we'll definitely take a look at it.
Yep, I agree, that's the best route to, you know. Otherwise, we could have all of Menominee, we could have a lot of situations. So, but you're right, you know, that needs to be brought to attention, so thank you for that.
I assume that part of the reason that we give them licenses is that we feel that they're upstanding business that, you know, can be trusted to do business here. And they've been showing me that they're not, so.
Yeah, very good, okay.
I, I can give you a call and we can discuss, there's another matter I want to talk to you about too as well, so we can, we can knock both of them out. And then we can see where we can go from there if that works for you. All right.
Dave, good, all right, any other discussion? Okay, all in, in favor of approving said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and that brings us down to no close session tonight. That would bring us out to a motion to adjourn. Cody?
I'll move to adjourn.
Good job, is there a second to that motion? Jeff?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you everybody, good job tonight.